Good evening. I don't want to speak back anymore. Good evening. It is now seven P M on Tuesday, September twenty fourth. I'd like to call our Richland County zoning public hearing meeting to order. Would you like to, oh please.
Branham?
Here.
Pew?
Here.
McBride?
Here.
Livingston? Teresa?
Here.
Weaver?
Here.
Baron?
Here.
Walker?
Here.
Mackey?
Here.
English?
Present.
Newton. We have a quorum.
Thank you. Next is item three additions and slash deletions to the agenda. We have case number twenty four dash zero two one uh M A. And this has been deferred by staff. Do I have any other additions or deletions to the agenda this evening?
Item chair.
Recognize sir.
Do you have a motion to defer at items now appropriate time?
Um, no, we're gonna do that under item four on the withdrawals and deferrals.
Alright, thank you.
So this would be any additions or deletions. Alright, I'll entertain a motion please.
So moved. Second.
A motion is second, any discussion? Madam clerk?
Branham?
Yes.
Pew?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston? Teresa?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Next is item four withdrawals and deferrals.
Item chair.
You recognize Councilwoman Branham?
At the request of Councilwoman Newton, uh, I'd like to move to defer uh item number six A three, case number two four dash zero one eight M A.
We have a motion for deferral, is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Motion is second, any discussion?
Excuse me, madam chair.
You recognize.
That deferral is to the October zoning public hearing?
Yes, please.
Alright, so just to repeat, it is a referral of case number twenty four dash zero one eight to until the October meeting. And that is item three on the agenda. Alright, madam clerk?
Branham?
Yes.
Pew?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Any other withdrawals or deferrals? You recognize?
Madam chair, I would like to defer item twelve, case number two four zero three zero M A, and I would like to defer it until the November meeting.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to defer item twelve, case number twenty four dash zero three zero M A into the, you said November, November meeting. Any discussion? Madam clerk?
Branham?
Yes.
Pew?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston? Teresa?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Um, I'd like to make a motion to withdraw case number twenty four dash zero two four M A. And this is number nine on the agenda.
Second.
Excuse me, madam chair.
Yes.
Just for the, for the record, the applicant for case twenty four dash two zero M A has submitted a request for a withdrawal. However, because it fell within the fifteen day window of the zoning public hearing, it has to be approved by county council, a vote versus done administratively.
Thank you so much, um, Director Price for that clarification. Um, I believe there was a motion, was there a second? Okay, motion is second, um, madam clerk?
Branham?
Yes.
Pew?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston? Teresa?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Motion approved.
And then Director Price, I believe we have one more withdrawal requested by applicant, case number twenty four dash zero two zero?
Yes, yes ma'am, that is correct, um, because again, once, because it fell within the fifteen day window, it must be done before council.
Thank you, and that is item, item number five on our agenda. So I'll entertain a motion?
I'm moved.
Second.
A motion is second, madam clerk?
Pew, uh, Branham?
Yes.
Pew?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. We are now at item number five, adoption of the agenda. And so a motion made would be to adopt the agenda minus the um deletions, deferrals, and withdrawals.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Motion is second, any discussion?
Adam chair?
You recognize?
Uh, just for the record and the individuals gathered here today who may have missed some of the things that we've done, could we list those items that we are deferring? If we could just have the clerk to list those items that are being deferred?
I can do it if you need.
Whichever you prefer.
Go ahead, madam clerk.
Okay, item number three of the agenda has been deferred to the October meeting, which is case number twenty four dash zero eighteen M A. Item number five has been withdrawn, uh, which is case number twenty four zero twenty. Item number nine has been withdrawn, which is case number twenty four zero twenty four. And item number twelve, which is case number twenty four zero thirty, has been deferred to the November meeting. Thank you.
Alright, any further discussion? Alright, madam clerk?
Branham?
Yes.
Pew?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Item six, uh, open public hearing, six A one. Is case number twenty four dash zero zero seven M A. Uh, Janelle G. Kim. Residential three district to general commercial district, point two four acres, one oh five Weir Road. T M S number R one nine nine zero two dash zero two dash zero seven. Planning commission recommends approval, staff recommends approval. This public hearing is now open. Vice Chair Pew, do you have anyone sign up this evening?
Adam chair, yes we do, we have the applicant, Janelle Kim. Mister Kim, if you could come to the mic. If you could come to the microphone, state your name and your address for the record, and you have two minutes to speak, sir.
My name's Gunil Kim. My address is one eight eight Thatcher Loop, Elgin, South Carolina, two nine zero four five. I'm here uh to have the residential lot rezoned to a parking lot for the business right, right next to it, which is eight six zero five Tunash Road.
Is, is that it, Mister Kim?
Yes, sir.
Alright, thank you, sir.
I thank you.
Adam chair, that concludes everyone that signed up to speak for that item.
Thank you, this public hearing is now closed.
Adam chair?
You recognize?
Uh, in the custom of District Seven, we held a town hall meeting, which is for all the items that are listed tonight for my district, and uh Mister Kim did come and share with the neighbors, and for that, I do move to approve this item.
Second.
A motion is second, any discussion? Madam clerk?
Branham?
Yes.
Pew?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Next is case number twenty four dash zero one seven M A, Eric Norton. Residential four district to residential five district, Bluff Road. T M S number R one three five one three dash zero one dash zero, excuse me, dash two seven. Planning commission, uh, disapproval, staff recommendation approval. This public hearing is now open. Vice Chair Pew?
Madam chair, we have five people sign up to speak against this item. When I call your name, if you can come to the podium, state your address and name for the record, you have two minutes to speak. First person up is Al Beday, if I, if I butcher your name, I apologize, cause uh Al? Baker, okay, Mister Baker, I apologize, sir.
Madam chair, while he's coming to the podium, I believe that the representative for this case just walked in, so they did not have a chance to sign in, if you would like to hear from them.
Thank you.
Mister Baker, you can still speak, sir. We get. Who is the applicant? Thank you, sir. Can you state your name and address for the record, and you have two minutes to speak, sir?
Yes, sir, my name is Josh Raven, ninety North Royal Tower Drive. Um, I am with Civil Engineering of Columbia, and we have been, we're representing the applicant. Came to the planning commission, and obviously that was a three to two vote, um, to recommend disapproval. And last night, we had a town hall with uh Councilwoman English, um, and had many of the, of the individuals who were in the, um, in the audience today, uh, basically, you know, give us their concerns about the development and whatnot. Um, the applicant was, is out of town currently. Was able to speak with them today, um, and relay some of the concerns, and um, did not want to uh defer this willy nilly, um, in respect of their time, respecting them coming out tonight, but uh, he would like to request a deferral till October twenty second to put together some, um, more visuals to see if there's a way uh to incorporate some of the concerns of the constituents that were brought last night uh into the uh concept plan. Um, so that's what, um, he's asked if, if we could do that, and again, I, I know it's a, uh, kinda backwards or whatnot, do apologize for any inconvenience, but that is what, what I've been asked to share this evening, so.
Mister Al Baker? Sir, if you can come to the podium, please state, state your name and address for the record, and you have two minutes to speak, sir.
My name is, uh, my name is Alfonso Baker, I reside at twenty six oh one Flamingo Drive, Columbia, South Carolina. Um, we met last night in a town hall meeting, and of course, I'm representing uh my neighborhood, which is Bluff Estates, which this gentleman, the applicant likes to put, um, a whole neighborhood within a neighborhood, so to speak, of the apartments, and we are totally against it. Uh, I have several app, uh, people that are not here tonight, they are against it, and the people that were there last night were against it. I understand that the applicant is asking for a deferment until October, this is something beyond our scope of trying to wait until then to do something, he should have been prepared, like we are prepared tonight. And I like that they have that taken in consideration, because some of the people that have put their time and effort in coming forth to present themselves last night, that are not, won't be able to, may, may not be able to come in October. So, uh, I'd like to, uh, for council to take that into consideration. And I have, uh, like for you all to, uh, listen to the consensus of our whole neighborhood, that we do not want apartments built in our neighborhood, we've been there over fifty some years myself, since my wife and I married, we raised five children, and to put that in the middle of that neighborhood will make the density and the culture and the, um, characteristic of the neighborhood really incomplete as to what it is right now. And I thank you so much.
Thank you, Mister Baker. Ma'am, next we have Jeff Thomas. Mister Thomas, if you could come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and you have two minutes to speak, sir.
Good evening, my name is Jeff Thompson, I reside at twenty six twenty one Flamingo Drive. I am a retired military veteran, been gone for thirty five years, but always been back and forth, this is home for me. Unfortunately, it's a sad thing that we have to have another neighborhood put inside of a neighborhood that already has an identity. Our identity is known by being on Bluff Road, and our neighborhood recognizes Bluffy Estates, and people do recognize the folks that are from there. So, we would like to have a better consideration of what we are looking for in the community, and how, you know, that would impact the posture and position that we have currently and the neighborhood that we have. My mother and father raised me in there, and so does Baker and a lot of other folks that have been there fifty seven years. So, it has an identity that's been set already, so that would only disrupt the peace that we have in the neighborhood uptick in crime, traffic, all that is being impacted.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Hayward Scott? Hayward Scott? Alright, Mister Scott, if you can approach to a podium, state your name and your address for the record, and you have two minutes to speak, sir.
Um, I didn't know I signed up to speak. I signed up to sign up sheet, and I thought the sign up sheet was just to sign in, but my name is Hayward Scott, and I live at forty two twenty eight Halleah Drive, and I do live in Bluffy State. And it's a concern of mine, too, about the neighborhood, putting, you know, apartments in the neighborhood. And I, you know, appreciate it, you know, because we like the neighborhood the way it is, because it's sort of peaceful now and quiet, although we had a lot of things going on in the neighborhood. But now it seems like the neighborhood is quiet down, it seems like now they won't put something into the neighborhood. It's not gonna be quiet anymore, and a lot of other things gonna be going on because of the apartments. Thank you.
Thank you, Mister Scott. Next we have Roy Washington. Mister Washington, if you can approach to a podium, state your name and your address for the record, and you have two minutes to speak, ma'am.
Good evening. My name is Rory Washington, my address is forty two thirty three Shore Crest Drive, Columbia. I had to come out tonight. Um, I grew up in the neighborhood, um, resided there until I went off to the military for a little while, um, then to college, and now I actually live around the corner from my parents, who still reside in the neighborhood. My concern is, we have a lot of our elderly population, um, who have resided there since the neighborhood actually began. Um, I was a little shocked and surprised that they were even thinking of putting something, um, in other people's backyard. So the way that it's set up, um, it, it is not something that I believe should happen in our neighborhood, very much like what everyone else has already shared. We have had some things go on, but things have gotten much, much better. Um, and I'm all for progress, but not to the point where it's going to disrupt the daily lives of our families that reside in the neighborhood. So I ask that you look at this and, um, vote no on this today. I also wanted to say that, um, I worked all day today, um, I'm an educator, and I made time to come this evening. I didn't let anything get in my way for showing up today for what I believed in. So for the person who is wanting to make this change to not show up tonight, um, it's kind of almost a slap in the face. So I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Miss Washington. Next we have Bobby Cunningham. Mister Cunningham, you can approach to a podium, state your name and your address for the record, you can go right here, Mister Cunningham. State your name and address for the record, and you have two minutes to speak.
Okay, my name is Bobby Cunningham, I live at one forty two Windsorwood Court in Gaston, South Carolina. And actually, I have a couple questions, it's like, uh, I am just getting notice of this billboard that's in my community, uh, it's supposed to be rezoning it, uh, I believe, Miss English, uh, is that correct? And what are they planning on doing down there?
Mister Cunningham, this is not a time for you to ask questions, sir.
Oh, it's not?
No, sir.
Okay, alright, then when can I come back and find out what's?
Had a town hall last night. So if you could just state your concerns, that'd be fine.
My concern is that they are planning to put apartments in there from what I understand, and this is a flat, this is flat land down there next to the railroad track, and my understanding is that this land was not, uh, available for apartment or anything like, just because of the drain off, uh, it's down in the bottom. So my concern is, uh, uh, putting apartment down in there, and that was what it is at, uh, at this time. Uh, I think it would cost a whole lot of problem in the community, it's only like ten people in that community, and, uh, we are very concerned about what's gonna be done down there. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mister Cunningham. Madam chair, that concludes everyone signed up to speak for that item.
Public hearing is now closed.
Adam chair?
You recognize?
Thank you, I'm had the opportunity to speak with the applicant, as well as Mister Josh Raven earlier. And in that time, um, just exactly what he's talked about, we talked about that. But during that time, I've also reached out to some of our neighborhood leaders, and their consensus has not changed. The fact that they're, um, the apartments and the things going in there, they are against the, not so much the development, but the increased density that has the potential to grow there. So at this time, um, I recommend disapproval. I move for disapproval, thank you.
Second.
Motion is second? Madam clerk?
Branham?
Yes.
Pew?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Teresa? Weaver?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Motion to disapprove?
Passed.
Next is item four, case number twenty four dash zero one nine M A, Bonnie Joshy, Joshee. Homestead District to Residential Transition District, five point one seven acres. Windsorwood Court, T M S number R three two four zero zero dash zero six dash two three, planning commission recommends approval, staff recommends approval. This public hearing is now open.
Madam chair?
You recognize?
Now, we have one person to sign up to speak, that's the applicant, Bonnie Joshee. Good evening, ma'am, if you can approach the podium, state your name and your address for the record, and you have two minutes to speak, ma'am.
My name is Bonnie Joshee, my address is, is good, my address is seven twenty one Tom's Creek Road, Hopkins, South Carolina, two nine zero six one. Um, I own, I'm sorry, I own the property on Windsorwood Court. I, it is five point one seven acres, um, I am getting ready to sell that property. In this economy, it is really hard for good, hardworking people to afford land, it is very expensive, so I wanted to divide the property up. There is a flood zone back on the back of the property that takes up a nice little bit, I'm having a survey done of it to try to determine how much of that the property does, because that's not usable property. I'm hoping that I'll be able to get, um, three acres out of this property. If that is the case, the estimation is those, that acreage would be one point three acres per lot. Um, and, well, excuse me, it was three lots that I'm trying to get, I apologize. If that's the case, and it being zoned H M, that would not work, because the minimum lot size is an acre and a half. If we go to just the two lots, it's gonna be a lot more expensive, and here again, I just, it's beautiful land, it's flat and easily developable. I, in my contract for the property to go up for sale, I've put a lot of thought behind that. In order for everything to fit in with the community, there are restrictions, there will be no single wide mobile homes, there could be double wide and stick-built homes. As far as environmental concerns go, no toxins, no toxic materials can be stored on the property or, um, you know, with any, anything like that, so that you're on well water out there. And so I want to make sure we're protecting that, I've lived in this community for sixty years. I've raised my children, I've gone to school, and I've worked in this community, my office is in Hopkins, and so I, I don't want to just divide and just sell to be selling, I want to provide something really nice for somebody to be able to build and raise a family. And, um, basically, that's, uh, that's what I'm trying to do.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you so much.
Madam chair, that concludes everyone that signed up to speak for that item.
Public hearing is now closed.
Adam chair?
You recognize?
Um, and we want to thank Miss Joshee for coming out last night, and, um, she had zero pushback, which was great. And so at this time, I move to approve.
Second.
Motion is second? Madam clerk?
Branham?
Yes.
Pew?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Next is, uh, it's number seven, but I don't think it's right, but that's where we are right now. Case number twenty four dash zero twenty two M A, Kevin Metz, planned development to residential transition district, three point one seven acres, nineteen twenty five Kennelley Road, T M S number R zero four two zero zero dash zero six dash one three, planning commission disapproval, staff recommendation disapproval. This public hearing is now open.
Adam chair?
You recognize?
Man, we have two people that signed up to speak, one is the applicant, and we have one person that is signed up for this project. Ki- Kevin Metzey? Metz, apologize, sir, if you can come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, you have two minutes to speak, sir.
Sure, Kevin Metz, uh, I'm at one oh nine Charlie Griner Road. Uh, the property I'm asking for, I own six acres, I'm downsizing and selling so I can move out to your district, Councilman Pew. In doing so, half the land is on P D, that my parents had done to build a vegetable stand, which never happened and never will. Um, so I'm trying to sell the land, I wanted to, I'm asking that the P D be reverted back to the R T, which it was originally, uh, so that I can, so that I can sell the, the house and property that we raised our family on. Uh, that's my request, and that's mass, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next we have Connie Turner. Miss Turner, if you can come to the mic, state your name and address for the record, you have two minutes to speak, ma'am.
Thank you, Connie Turner, two hundred Hope Trace Way in Ermo. And I want to speak in favor of the reverting it to R T, it's in keeping with the neighborhood, and I appreciate your consideration.
Thank you, Miss Turner. Madam chair, that concludes everyone that signed up to speak for this item.
This public hearing is now.
Adam chair?
Recognize?
Like to make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion is second, any discussion? Madam clerk?
Branham?
Yes.
Pew?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Next, uh, item eight, case number twenty four dash zero two three M A, Madison Pickler. General Commercial District to Residential Five District, twenty one point oh seven acres. Northeastern Freeway, T M S R one seven zero zero three dash zero one dash zero four. Planning commission approval, staff recommendation approval, this public hearing is now open.
Adam chair?
You recognize?
No one signed up to speak for this item. No one signed up to speak for this item.
This public hearing is now closed.
Madam Chair.
You're recognized.
I'd like to move to approve this item.
Second. Motion is second. Any discussion? Madam Clerk?
Brannum?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Next is item ten, Mike Crandell, Institutional District to General Commercial District, one point three acres. One seven six five Dutch Fork Road, TMS R zero two four zero eight dash zero one dash zero four. Planning Commission approval, staff recommendation is disapproval. This public hearing is now open.
Madam Chair.
You're recognized.
Ma'am, we have two people that signed up to speak. That's the applicant, Mr. Mike Crandell, and the one other person that signed up for it. Mr. Mike, if you can approach to, if you can approach to a podium, state your name and address for the record, and you have two minutes to speak, sir.
Yes, sir. Thank you. So, we purchased the property, oh, I'm sorry, Mike Crandell, uh, nine forty-seven Stradly Lane, Chapin, South Carolina.
Thank you, sir.
So, when we purchased the property, um, in January of twenty twenty-four, we're residential builders, um, some called contractors, general contractors. So, at that time, given the zoning, uh, we would have been able to occupy that as residential builders and contractors. Unbeknownst to us, the zoning changed March first, and as a result, we're not able to use that property for what we had originally intended for. Um, uh, Mr. Price and his staff was extremely helpful in trying to find a way to fit that in, but ultimately decided that we were going to have to do the rezoning process. So, I just wanted to kind of stress, as contractors, it's not going to be a retail site, so the density and the traffic over there is already pretty, uh, pretty strong. So, we won't be adding any cars. We're not going to be adding any, uh, retail location to that site. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next, we have Derek Jackson. Mr. Jackson, if you could state your name and address for the record, and you have two minutes to speak, sir.
Uh, thank you. Madam Chair, members of the council, my name is Derek Jackson, two nine oh nine Ulmer Road, Columbia, South Carolina. I am an attorney with the law firm of Toby Ward in, uh, Columbia, and we represent the applicant, Mike Crandell. Uh, Mr. Ward wanted to be here tonight, unfortunately had, uh, developed an infection from surgery he had last week and had to be hospitalized, so he asked me to sub in his place. Uh, so I will make three quick points. The first point I would make is that the proposed zoning request is compatible with the adjacent uses. If you look at page ninety-eight in the agenda packet, you'll see a, the map that shows the property is bordered on both sides with general commercial, which is what he wants the zoning changed to, and across the street is also general commercial. There are several businesses all along Dutch Fork Road there in immediate vicinity of his parcel, a, uh, Allstate Insurance Office, a dentist office across the street. Down the way, there's a, uh, a Duraclean, uh, business, and then there's a animal hospital further on down, so it's compatible with the adjacent uses. The second point is that I think it's consistent with the two thousand fifteen comprehensive plan in that, uh, that says commercial development should be located within nearby activity centers or may be considered for location along a main road corridor. Obviously, Dutch Fork Road going from, uh, Valentine to Chapin is a main road corridor, and this parcel is right adjacent to that road. And then the final port, his intended use, he's going to develop a contractor's office, which is not very far from what the INS already allows. For example, they allow government offices to, to be in that parcel under existing zoning, so I think that's not a big bridge to jump. And so, on behalf of, uh, uh, Mark, I mean, Mike Crandell, I would recommend, uh, that you follow the PC's recommendation and approve this map amendment. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. Madam Clerk, I'm sorry. Madam Chair, that concludes everyone that signed up to speak for this item.
This public hearing is now closed.
Madam Chair.
You're recognized.
I'd like to make a motion, but, uh, first I do want to acknowledge that, uh, through my law practice, I do know Mr. Jackson, his good work, and Mr. Ward's as well. Would you please extend my well wishes to Mr. Ward and his recovery? Um, and thank you for that update on him. Uh, I did have an opportunity to visit the property, and, uh, certainly on the zoning map, this, this parcel of land, uh, as GC would be in harmony with everything in the immediate vicinity. It's already operating as a non-residential use, and this would just, as described already, allow the applicant to continue to use the property for the, uh, intended use at the point of purchase, so my motion is to approve.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? Madam Clerk?
Brannum?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Next, item eleven, case number twenty-four dash zero two nine MA, Lindsay S. Van Slambrook Esquire. General Commercial District to Community Mixed Use District, two point three six acres. Thirteen thirty-five Garner Lane, TMS number R zero seven four zero six dash zero one dash zero five. Planning Commission approval, staff recommendation approval. This public hearing is now open.
Madam Chair.
You're recognized.
Ma'am, we have one person signed up to speak. That's the applicant, Lindsay Slambrook. Ms. Slam, Slambrook, could you approach the podium, state your name and address for the record, and you have two minutes to speak, ma'am?
Yes. Thank you all for your time this evening. Um, Lindsay Van Slambrook, attorney for the applicant. My address is actually one fifty-one Meeting Street in Charleston, South Carolina. Um, so, this particular piece of property is a location of an existing motel that's vacant. It was built in the mid nineteen seventies. It's a hundred and thirty-one rooms. And, uh, what my clients, the property owners are proposing to do is to just revitalize that motel and turn it into a hundred and thirty-one long-term micro-units, um, not expanding the existing improvements at all. Unfortunately, in the current zoning of GC, the parking requirements, the existing parking, which they're not taking any away, um, they couldn't, there was nowhere on the site to add it. There's not enough that is required into the GC district, and so, working with staff, we originally were going to request a variance, and it was staff's preference, um, and we went with their recommendation that we seek a rezoning. And so, that is our request here. Um, just looking at where this property is located, it's within, and the comp plan, it's within the community activity center and, um, within a priority investment area, which I noted has an emphasis on creating a diverse stock of housing, so, um, I thought this fit in great, that it would be a conversion from a vacant motel into, um, long-term micro-units, and I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you, ma'am. Madam Chair, that concludes everyone that signed up to speak for this item.
Thank you. This public hearing is now closed. Um, Mr. Livingston, uh, this district, this is in his district, and he did notify would not be able to attend the meeting tonight, but, um, he does support this project, and I will make a motion on his, uh, behalf to, accept staff recommendation. Motion is second. Any discussion? Madam Clerk?
Brannum?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Next is item thirteen, case number twenty-four dash zero three one MA, Pastor Laverne McKinney, Residential Two District to Neighborhood Mixed Use District, four three eight Raven Road, TMS number R one seven two zero nine dash zero one dash zero six. Planning Commission approval, staff recommendation, disapproval. This public hearing is now open.
Madam Chair.
You're recognized.
Ma'am, we have one person signed up to speak, and that's Alexis Singletary. Alexis, I'm apologize, ma'am. If you can approach to a podium, state your name and your address for the record. You have two minutes to speak, ma'am.
Yes, sir. Uh, good evening. Alexia Singleton, three twelve Markham Rise, Columbia. Um, we are a church, prayer mountain ministry. We sit on six acres. We own six acres of land. We've been serving the community for over thirty years now. Um, we were advised to do this zoning, didn't know anything about zoning or which way to go, but we were advised to go this route. Uh, and we simply want to, uh, operate and build a daycare there. So, we've been serving the community spiritually, and we want to serve the families there. There are a lot of, um, houses and apartments that are going up in the district, and we just want to be available to offer childcare services for the families that are currently there and those that will move in. That's it.
Thank you, ma'am. Madam Chair, that concludes everyone that signed up to speak for this item.
Public hearing is now closed.
Madam Chair.
You're recognized.
Uh, as I previously stated, as a custom in, in District Seven, uh, Pastor McKinney and his staff did come out to our town hall and speak to the neighbors, and I am in favor of this project, and I move to approve this item.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? Madam Clerk?
Brannum?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Item number seven, adjournment.
Oh, to adjourn?
Second.
Motion is second. Madam Clerk?
Brannum?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Any adjourn? Thank you.